Okay, we are ready. I call this August 27th, 2024 Hybrid Administrative Meeting of the Board of County Commissioners to Order. We will have a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Dr. Lindstrom from our Behavioral Health Division. So please join me in a moment of silence. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Lindstrom. Item three, announcements of additions or changes. Madam County Manager, are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
Madam Chair, no changes.
Commissioners, any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, move approval of the agenda. All those, oh, do we have a second? Moved in second? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you. We move on to Proclamations. Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is an acknowledgement. Please come up. Thank you. This is for the, our emergency dispatch. Thank you, and thank you all for being here today. Acknowledgement from Burnley County Board of Commissioners does hereby acknowledge Burnley County Emergency Communications, acknowledging that the International Academies of Emergency Dispatch, I A E D, is a standard-setting organization for emergency dispatch services worldwide. More than 3,500 emergency communication centers use the medical, fire, police, and emergency nurse triage protocols developed and maintained by I A E D, which are recognized as the standard of care and practice for emergency dispatch and are used in 46 countries. Accreditation from this organization is the highest distinction given to an emergency communication centers, certifying that the center is performing at or above the established standards for the industry. Burnley County Emergency Communications has been approved by I A E D as an accredited emergency medical dispatch center of excellence as of August 13th, 2024, for emergency dispatching. Burnley County Emergency Communications also has the distinguished honor of being the 70th emergency medical dispatch accredited center in the world, as well as the only agency in New Mexico that is ACE accredited in medical and fire. Burnley County Emergency Communications, which answered 70,00911 calls and 160,000 calls for law enforcement and fire and rescue in calendar year 2023, demonstrated strong local oversight, rigorous quality processes, and a commitment to daily-driven continuous improvement as part of the process to complete accreditation. Is with sincere appreciation that the Burnley County Board of Commissioners honors and recognizes the members of Burnley County Emergency Communications for their hard work and continued improvements to provide life-saving care to the county's citizens and visitors. Thank you very much. This very impressive. Please, we'd love to hear some words.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, Commissioner Benson, thank you for the acknowledgement. Really, we are the only 911 center in the state of New Mexico that holds those accreditations, and that's saying something. These people are the best of the best. And for example, last week, when Albuquerque went down with their outage, we fielded 1,715 calls in a 21/12 hour period. So just think about that for a moment. We took the entire region and did exemplary work, and these people took it on the fly. They took it right away. And that's saying something. And that's not an easy task. So I thank this commission again for supporting us. And this may be my last time I get to speak to you pending my retirement. So I wish that you continue to give your support to these outstanding individuals. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Please come in.
Please come up.
Take a picture. Okay, thank you. We will move on to public comments before communications. Each person has two minutes, and you will be alerted about your remaining time. When your name is called, please make your way to the podium if you are speaking in person. Before making your statements, please state your name for the record. To maintain order and decorum and in the spirit of professionalism and respect for everyone present, speakers must adhere to the two-minute time limit. Julianne, do we have speakers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have five speakers signed up this evening with one online, starting off with Mr. Don Schrader, followed by Tim Eichenberg, followed by Dr. Gerardo Cionello.
Don Schrader, African-American Colin Powell went high in the U.S. military and the U.S. government. Sadly, Colin Powell had the blood on his hands of millions of people in three wars: the Vietnam War, the Gulf War, and the later U.S. war against Iraq. Colin Powell grew up in New York City. Many kids in his neighborhood became violent street gang members, killing, dying, going to prison. The awful bloody truth is Colin Powell was heavily involved in blinding, paralyzing, and the murder of far more human beings than all of those violent street gang members combined. But because Powell did his massive evil bloody violence for the United States government in Vietnam and Iraq, millions of whites and blacks consider Powell a success, a hero. No one is born evil. Powell was not born evil. Powell became a war criminal step by step as many whites and blacks cheered him on. Many white U.S. presidents and generals are also war criminals. The U.S. government celebrates when its former victims, blacks, Chicanos, Native Americans, become U.S. soldiers to rob and murder people of color in smaller nations.
Tim Eichenberg, followed by Dr. Gerardo Cionello, followed by Michelle Melendez.
Thank you. Madam Chair and members of the commission, I'm Tim Eichenberg, and I'm a former elected official in Burnley County. And I have the pleasure of running into our chair and asking her about 2.137 Dakota Conduct. And I saw that, that was on the agenda tonight, and so that's why I wanted to come down and speak. What that particular section in the Code of Conduct talks about is not allowing elected officials to serve after their term expires for one year. And I just wanted to say that we all want good government. And I think that if we take away a good actor that has performed with character and integrity, that we shouldn't lose them for a year. And so that's why I came down to speak, to ask if you would actually take the opportunity to review that and maybe bring it back before all of you, because I don't think we should be punitive to our elected officials. Thank you, Madam Chair. And a quick shout out, since I only did a minute to Don Schrader, I remember him from 50 years ago. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the commission.
Michelle Melendez?
Go ahead.
Followed by...
Good evening, Chair and members of the commission. My name is Michelle Melendez, and I'm a resident of District Two, and I work at District Two at a community clinic. And in preparation for the UNM Hospital Mill Levy election that's coming up in November, I've been reviewing years' worth of quarterly reports, especially the fiscal year-end reports like the one you'll be receiving tonight from UNM Hospitals. And I'm looking at noticeable trends from year to year at the year-end date. And I recognize that operating the state's only regional trauma center is an enormous task, and nothing can be boiled down to a few data points. But I am looking at certain key performance indicators that really speak to the Burnley County taxpayers' role in helping support our public hospital, and especially to help fund indigent care for sick and indigent people. And the role of Burnley County in helping us achieve that goal through your accountability mechanisms and having this lease agreement. And so that's the reason I'm pulling out just these few data points for you to be looking at year to year. The Mill Levy revenues are way up. So back in 19, or excuse me, 2015, there were $92 million being sent to UNM Hospital. In 2024, we're looking at $131 million because of the increase in the valuation. That's a good thing. At the same time, charity care costs are down, and that's because many more people are insured. And we're also very grateful for that, especially the Affordable Care Act and expansions to Medicaid in our state. Overall, uncompensated care that's being given at the hospital is also down from 69 million to 65 million during that time period. And UNM Care enrollment, and that's the program that helps people pay for their care, is way down from 35,000 before the Affordable Care Act to only 4,000 today. You would expect to see those numbers increase. And I'd ask you to look for those numbers in your quarterly reports and annually. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Melendez.
Well, good evening, Madam Chair and County Commissioners, and thank you for serving. Here I have a copy of my certificate of naturalization. And just I want you to know that, that there are an estimated 30 million noncitizen in the U.S. as of April 2024. This is fact sheet about on a citizen vote. The noncitizen population includes all foreign-born residents of the U.S., legal, illegal, and quasi-legal minus those who have become naturalized U.S. citizens. Thus, the noncitizen population includes, one, lawful permanent residents who have not naturalized; number two, non-immigrant visa holders; number three, aliens granted asylum and refugees; number four, the more than 1 billion inadmissible aliens the Biden administration has allowed to fly into the U.S. without a visa in a clear abuse of immigration law; and then five, illegal aliens, at least 5.5 million have entered through Biden's open borders. In all 50 states, and the District of Columbia issue driver's license to noncitizens who are here legally. 19 states and District of Columbia issue driver's license to illegal aliens. Every noncitizen who is authorized to work in the U.S. is eligible for a social security number. And with a driver's license and a social security number, any noncitizen can register to vote in any state unless the state or county takes additional steps to verify U.S. citizenship. All states are required under federal law to accept and use federal voter registration form at motor vehicles department and welfare agency. The form has only one checkbox to answer yes or no to the question, under penalty or perjury, are U.S. citizens? With registering to vote and voting in federal elections by noncitizens are felonies and make noncitizen deportable. Many noncitizens are aware of this. That said, please do the right thing, as I did, obeying our U.S. Constitution and that only U.S. citizens vote. This is a certificate, and that just to prove the fact that, now let's do this thing right, all right? Okay, thank you, and God bless you.
And that concludes in-person public comment. We'll now move to remote public speakers, Mr. Rudolph Serrano.
There you go. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Can you see me?
No.
I got a, I was gonna show you an art piece that I have in front of me. I don't know if you can video on?
Just please, please proceed, Mr. Serrano.
Well, I have in front of me a piece of art that I call, it promotes Jesus being in my life and Christ, and attacks legacy church charging 30% of the people when you have 30% of economy. It has a badge of APB with the number 666, and also for root and exception, which is made, you know, to harm our children. And this piece promotes what our children see when a gay rapist comes to rape them. And that's why it was so important for you guys to get the visual. I don't know why this cannot be made. Is there something that?
I think that's on your side, Mr. Serrano. So just, you'll have to describe it, and please continue with your two minutes.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's what I got. But it's an art piece of a 3D art that I'm trying to define. But, you know, I took it there, but they didn't let me to show it when I took it there. So I don't know how can you appreciate it, you know, without the visual side. But have a great day, though. Thank you very much.
Thank you for calling in.
And that concludes public comment.
Thank you. Now we move on to 5A Finance, University of New Mexico Hospital Report, fourth quarter. Ms. Kate Becker.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me. Welcome to the fourth quarter. So my report is in your packet. I do want to highlight a few items. The first thing I want to say is thank you to Commissioner Barboia and interim County Manager Reagan, who attended our listening session last night at the International District Library. You'll remember, the last time I was here was in May, and at that time, we talked about holding another listening session. So we're very excited. We were able to do that, got a lot of really great feedback and good discussion, and appreciated their participation very much. We have, at Commissioner Barboia's request, also continued to schedule ongoing listening sessions, because we think it's very important to continue that process. So our next one is December 4th. That'll be at St. Timothy's Lutheran Church, and then we'll be scheduling them in other districts around the county so that folks can hear more about that. So that's good news. Couple of other things to update you on, the Crisis Triage Center. So as you know, that opened the end of June. And one of the things that was a new feature in that space was the peer support living room model for counseling. That was something we were very excited about bringing online. Our first month in July, we did about 68 hours of peer counseling there, or June, just in that first timeframe. For the last month, we've done over 181 hours of peer counseling. So really seeing a lot of uptake from the community for that service, and we're very excited to be able to provide that. So very happy about that, and that's going well. It's busy, and I just heard from the psychiatrists today that psychiatric emergency services is a beautiful space, and they're so happy to have the extra space and the ability to separate geriatric populations and pediatric populations from the regular adult population. So that's going really well as well. So in your packet this time, it has the May financial results, because even though our year ends June 30th, it takes a while for the audit to close and to close our books for the year. So it'll actually be November-ish when our whole audit is filed with the state auditor. But we did include in your packet the unaudited, or best estimate of what the Mill Levy expenses were for all of FY 2024. So we do have that in your packet for both the 85% of the Mill Levy that goes to regular operations and maintenance, and then the 15% that goes to behavioral health services. So very happy to be able to report on that as well, and happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Kate? Commissioner Barboia.
Thank you, and thank you, CEO Kate Becker, for always being present in community. I think that's also another great thing, that your leadership, your presence there, and being in one community is, you don't just send your community liaison, you're actually there. So I really appreciate that. I did have a couple of questions. You were, I was trying to find the Mill Levy part on here. So on, this is the part you're talking about, on page 14, that's the total Mill Levy expenditures?
I'm not sure what page it's on in your PDF, but it's the page that looks like this, page seven. It says, Mill Levy Distribution Detail by Department?
Yes. Oh, page seven on the, yes. So when total Burnley County Mill Levy, and you're counting, this is 127 million. The mill, but then on the first level, it says Mill Levy 108. I just want, if you could walk me through this a little bit. The 15% is allocated to Burnley Health, to behavioral health. What's the, what is the point of pulling out that 15% just to show that the, that it is behavioral health specific?
Yes, ma'am. So Commissioner Barboia and Commissioner Aka, the 15% was part of the agreement through the MOU to allocate that to behavioral health services. So the payment, the spending of that funding is shown on page 43 in this report, which shows how it's allocated to the salaries and benefits and services for behavioral health. So that's the difference between 127 million and 108 million. And then the 108 million that remains is the 85% that's allocated to general operations and maintenance of the hospital according to the Hospital Funding Act.
Okay, thank you. And then I had on page, well, what's on page 23 here? Let me see what number it is for the, let's see. It's page 16, starts the MDC inmates receiving hospital services?
Yes.
So inpatient versus outpatient for folks in MDC? How does, what does that mean?
So this item in the report for MDC inmates receiving services for inmates who actually, this has been the same item in the report for years, for folks who are actually transported to the hospital and receiving services there. The services provided at the clinics at MDC are not listed in this report. Those are listed in the report that we give to the MDC Joint Healthcare Authority.
So then inpatient is when they come to you because they're transported there, and outpatient is?
Is when they're transported to a clinic at the hospital. So maybe they need a cardiology visit, for example. And so the cardiology clinic isn't at the jail, that's primary care. So for cardiology, they would be transported to the hospital for services there. So that's what outpatient is on that report.
And then you're saying that MDC healthcare at MDC that we now have, I'm very grateful for, I'll say that forever, is that, that's on a, that's not included in this report at all?
Correct. Now, what we could do, and I think it's probably, because we have a little bit of a dual reporting thing going on, and we do report on the services at MDC to the Metropolitan Detention Center Joint Healthcare Authority, which has half members from Burnley County and half members from UNMH. What we could do is actually include that report in this report, if that would be helpful, so that you just get the same information in one place, if that would be useful.
I think so, especially because none of us are on that board. So I'd appreciate that a lot. The following, and if I may, sorry, Madam Chair, thank you. The following page, page 17, right, there's this, all the 12 months ended, broken down by funding source. So help me understand this, please, that charity care, Burnley County, and then Emsa, IHS, and, and, yeah, can you just help? And charity cares are, is UNM cares, is that?
Yes, ma'am. Charity care is UNM care.
Okay. And that's, this is by funding source. What does that mean, broken down by funding source?
So we had a total of 987,267 encounters with patients who are residents of Burnley County during calendar, or FY 24, July 1 to June 30. And then it breaks it down by who was the payer. So this list is kind of going, if you jump to the middle, you can see Medicaid is the payer for 293,456 of those encounters. Medicare is 299,000 plus, which makes sense, because we have an aging demographic in our community. Uninsured, HMOs, and all other. And then charity care is the very top one. So that's the UNM care encounters for the year.
And those are the number of encounters that were charged to charity care. Just trying to make sure I'm understanding. And then the next one, the 638, was Emsa Emergency Medical Services for aliens, right? And the other part, I don't quite understand. So IHS is Indian Health Services, and then we have a Native American encounters on the bottom that's sort of separate through, from all of this. Can you help me understand what those differences are?
So on that chart, IHS is the funding source for those 3,788 encounters. They are a payer of last resort. Medicaid, for example, would go first. If an IHS participant had Medicaid, Medicaid would be the first payer. IHS would be the next payer if they didn't have that. So then the list of total encounters is, how many encounters do we have from Burnley County? That's 987,000. Of those, the next number is what number were Native American patients? So that's 121,000 encounters. But if you do the math in reverse, you can tell that those 121,000 Native American encounters were mostly from payers who were not IHS. They were mostly paid by another payer source, Medicare or Medicaid or another one.
Thank you. Okay. And then I also, because it's just like, a lot of this is uninsured, like Emsa is usually uninsured. So then we have another category that's also uninsured. Is Emsa usually uninsured, because it's undocumented populations most?
But that's a really specific registration category, so that's why those encounters are captured there. The uninsured who don't fall into charity care are people who maybe didn't provide us with the information to show that they should be in UNM care. And as you know, from the last couple of years, we've worked really hard with the Healthcare Task Force on improving our process for capturing people in UNM care and making sure that they get access to that. So a lot of work around making sure we have appropriate language for that, making sure that we have appropriate publicity for that, changing the website, changing how people can register for that. So I would expect to see some more of those uninsured move into the charity care and UNM care bucket. But there will still be people who, for whatever reason, they, they don't have insurance, but they don't want to apply for UNM care. It does happen from time to time.
Okay. And I think that, thank you to that point. I think you've heard, you've been all the same meetings I have, you've heard from community large, that, you know, it is interesting that our numbers go down for charity care, I think, with ACA, and then with the passing of the Healthcare Affordable Fund, which I helped do in my other job. But we now have increased, and the Medical Debt Act, right, we have more folks being covered. And so I guess just seeing this number... And so, I guess just seeing this number, yeah, how do we make that more accessible rather than more burdensome for folks that don't have insurance? It feels like we should be able to move them into that bucket. And I'm understanding encounters, last, I wanted to see page, oh, that was the one. Oh, last, I just want to make sure I'm understanding, is when I read these, because I'm like, wait, I think I understand it. On page eighteen, the next eight, next page, there's, based on primary and secondary coverage. So, this tells us, under just Burnley, and I, I'm not quite sure, are all the rest of these counties just for us to view in comparison?
We just list all of them because we were asked to.
Okay. No, I appreciate it. I like to see it. But that doesn't mean that's cost coming out, that's not cost coming out of your budget, out of the UNM hospital?
Well, all of those are charity care patients at UNM hospital.
Okay. That came from those, these counties. Okay, great. That's exciting. And then there's charity care costs, uninsured costs, and then total uncompensated costs for Burnley County, for example. Those are, that's the same numbers above? No, it's not. Oh, because those are encounters and these are numbers. Okay.
Yes, and those dollar amounts should match. So, if you look at the first line for financial assistance to patients by county, for Burnley County, and you go all the way across to the right, the total uncompensated care cost of sixty-five million, that will tie to, on the next page, the financial assistance to Burnley County patients by zip code. And then that total will be the same, sixty-five million dollars. But it breaks it down more by zip code, so you can tell sort of where the, the patients are coming from.
Yeah, I really appreciate that. Thank you. And I had a couple, just two, sorry if I may, Madam Chair. The, so I think just to the, what we've heard from community, right, both we have the mill levy, we just saw in our Board of Finance meeting, how much of our DRT goes to UNM, and then, and as, rightfully right, we're the public hospital. And then now we have a, I, we have an increased contract, which I think I've brought this up before, that's why I asked about the MDC contract. We, when, I remember the first two times that that contract was negotiated before you all took it over, you know, those companies that were out of state, we know were neglectful in, in the services they provided, they were including what now you all are actually doing in connecting to community and trying to do that warm handoff. And they were including that as part of their care. Obviously, they weren't doing it. So, when we increased the contract, I can understand that in that sense, and that we're here, you're doing more than what the others ever did before, even though it was included in the contract before, they were not compliant. But I guess I just see, when I see our DRT, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars plus our mill levy, and now probably our biggest contract, I'm not sure if that's true or not, that, and so I guess I just want to make sure that when we're thinking about the uncompensated, the uninsured, I'd love to see this matching more with what, where the, the reason why all these are coming is because we're the public, because y'all are a public hospital and we're responsible for that. So, that's sort of a statement. My, my question to it is, does you, and, does MDC now have twenty-four hour healthcare, medical service onsite?
We do.
We do, twenty-four hours.
We do, and the Rapid Response Team has been probably the biggest significant change in terms of the way we respond to care at MDC, because it's a big place, it's a big physical facility. And a lot of the time, previously, maybe folks would be identified as having a problem, but there wasn't a way to quickly get to them and bring them back. So, the Rapid Response Team has been deployed there now since we started, and that has been just a huge improvement in what I would call good catches, or, you know, seeing when people go down and being able to intervene immediately. And that's, that's been extremely helpful.
Would you, I think this is my last question. Would you anticipate that those numbers of transport folks from MDC to UNM would, will decrease over time with our presence, with your presence there? Or is that, for, are those for differing reasons?
Most of the folks who get transported from the jail are transported because of a medical event that can't be handled at the jail. So, they might have a heart attack, they might have a severe asthma attack that can't be treated at the jail. It's some, it's an event that requires a higher level of care. So, it would be just like somebody in the community being transported by ambulance to the hospital.
Okay. Thank you. I think that's all the questions.
Just a follow-up, Ms. Becker. I think that, well, maybe it's just a comment, but the fact that UNMH is at MDC, those transports to UNMH proper must be quicker, they must be better communicated, and, and do you feel like that bridge is, is a stronger bridge now with your?
Thank you for that question. I think not only is the process better, but the information on both sides is much more robust because we're in the same medical record. So, we, we built Cerner out to the jail, so we have, it's the exact same medical record. So, the doctor in the emergency room can see the entire medical history from the jail and vice versa. When somebody's admitted at the jail, they can know, okay, what's their past medical history? So, they can be prepared for managing events or making sure that they have whatever care they need at the time that they're at the jail.
Yeah. That is great news. Thank you for that. Sure, one more.
Sorry. Just one last comment, and just, this is more just a comment. I'm, I think I've said many times, I was a single mom, my kids were, I was on Medicaid, got housing. And the word charity care, my uncle used to be on UNM cares for a long time, and I just thought it was so great that he would, before ACA, that he was able to get insurance even though he didn't have a employer that would cover insurance. And the word charity just doesn't, it's, and it's not really charity great because it's our taxpayer dollars, so it's not somebody giving charity to our communities, it's really just health coverage. And I, I guess I've just been contentious about the name charity. I think there's already a stigma with our public hospital, public services. I don't know, just making a comment.
Oh, thank you. And I can actually check, I don't know if there's a requirement that it be listed as charity care. I don't know if that's like a regulatory thing, or if we can change it to listing it as UNM care, but we can try that.
I don't think it ever was. I know that the indigenous and sick is in all the language across the board for both what we are responsible for and what our public hospital is. But I don't believe the word charity is in there, but I could be wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Becker. Any other comments? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming.
Have a good night.
Good night. Item five B, Code of Conduct Review Board and Compliance Office Update. Mr. Rocky Gutierrez.
Madam Chair, Board of County Commissioners, good night, good evening, how are you? Rocky Gutierrez, Chief Compliance Officer, I'm going to present our semi-annual report. It's required that we submit a report biannually, and we are getting on schedule. So, we will be reporting on the last two quarters for FY twenty-four. I'd also like to introduce, I don't know if they can see it up there, Ms. Veronica Gonzalez, she's our Board Attorney for the Review Board, and I am proud to present that we have brought on Ms. Rita Martinez as our Program Coordinator. So, the Code of Conduct Review Board, and my notes are not showing up here for some reason, it's not giving me my notes. Okay. So, the Code of Conduct, you can see it, will be located at Chapter Two, Article Three, Division Four, and the NMSA as cited. The Review Board duties, we act on sworn complaints recommended to the commission. We also receive any complaint from citizens, employees, and if it is not related to the Code of Conduct itself, we will forward it to the appropriate department. We will also track those particular complaints and ensure that they are properly handled within ninety days. We log those complaints, and part of those logs we use for these reports, our quarterly reports to the Board, which they approve, and there's no time limit for them to approve, so as soon as they can, we try to get that done. And then we compile the information for these biannual reports. Compliance Office duties, again, we monitor and log the complaints, we submit the quarterly reports and the semi-annual reports to the Board. As part of the process, because the procedural requirements for the sworn complaints and administrative process for, I call it administrative litigation, for sworn complaints, it's a very complex process. And a lot of people, when they appear, they appear pro se. So, it's, it becomes a little intimidating, a little confusing for some folks. So, our office created a guide for each step. These guides are in, in unison with the Review Board Rules and Regulations. So, you can read the guides and compare them to the rules and regulations from the Board. We also created forms as examples. So, if someone says, well, how does this particular guide apply? We created a form as an example so they can submit the proper documents when necessary through the process. We are in the process of that, our, our office has created the drafts, and Ms. Gonzalez is reviewing those particular documents. A summary of activities, again, sworn complaints, we receive advisory opinions, which are submitted to the Review Board and issued by the Review Board. Informal guidance is issued by our office. Non-Code of Conduct complaints, and we recently received an advisory opinion from the Board itself on certain types of advisory complaints, sworn complaints, complaints where the complainant is known, and complaints where the complainant is anonymous. So, if you're interested in that particular decision from the Board, I'm more than happy to submit that to you or forward that to you. We also conduct housing appeals. Our office is the approved administrative hearing officer for these particular proposed terminations of assistance, and we coordinate trainings and, well, various trainings throughout the county. I want to give a special thank you again to our Review Board members. Mr. Eric Jeffries from District One and Paul Chavis from District Two, Chuck McCune and Angel Garcia from District Three, Chair Martha Brown and Jenny Lusk from District Four, Robert Doucette and Sean Cassani from District Five, Ralph Rons and Kai Tecumseh. Through this, we wanted to also illustrate the terms for these particular members, and I will paraphrase the Code of Conduct. Each member is appointed for two years. If a new commissioner comes on board, regardless of, if the two years has not expired, and new commissioner comes on board, or, I apologize, when the term of the commissioner ends, so even if it's the same commissioner, that member should be reappointed from that particular district. I should note that District Three, that member, their term will expire, I believe.
Two, three, and four, say, twenty twenty-four?
It was December, or December eleventh, if I'm not mistaken, right? Yes, December eleventh, twenty twenty-four?
I would just think, I don't know, on your chart here, it says District Two, Three, and Four expire in twenty twenty-four?
Yes. Yes. So, those, those particular members will be expiring at this time. And actually, it's not even that they're expiring, it's that the, the term of the particular commission in that district, that term will expire. So, that chair needs to be either reappointed or select someone else. And that, for those two particular chairs, I believe it's District Four and District Two, yes. And for District Three, that term is expiring December eleventh and two thousand twenty-four. But the Code also allows for those particular members to continue in that seat until someone is reappointed, just FYI. So, if you don't do anything in order to not disrupt the Board, that member can remain seated. So, the tenure summary, as I mentioned, we are focusing on FY twenty-four. These are the numbers, which I will go more into specifics when I talk about the quarterly report. You can see the numbers for the last ten years, and we have been very active for the last two. Again, for the Compliance Office, that is us. And I will just focus on Quarter Three and Quarter Four. So, sworn complaints, there was no sworn complaints for Quarter Three and Quarter Four. Advisory opinions, there was one submitted for Quarter Four. There were four informal opinions requested and produced in Quarter Three and Four. An informal guidance, four in Quarter Three, and six requests for informal guidance in Quarter Four. Non-Code of Conduct complaints, there were three in Quarter Three, and as you can see, there were thirteen in Quarter Four. There was one, it was a sworn complaint not submitted to the Board, and what happened in this particular case, somebody had filed a sworn complaint, submitted the proper form, had it notarized, but after review by the review, excuse me, by the Review Board Chair, it was determined that it was not relevant to the Code, so it was submitted back to our office for handling. Housing appeals, as I mentioned, we are the appointed hearing officer for conducting proposed terminations for housing. In Quarter Three, we held ten hearings, and in Quarter Four, we held six hearings. And trainings, so trainings are two-year cycles. So, there's not many that you will see for this particular year, because next year is the time that we do the official training for Code of Conduct Ethics ordinance. The Quarter Three, we had four, and Quarter Four, we had six. Those are in the new employee orientation sessions, which I thank the HR Training Team for setting those up, and we are part of that. And through that, through that process, we, we conduct these particular Code of Conduct trainings. So, those individuals, those ten trainings, there were, I believe, five hundred and twenty-eight participants in those trainings themselves. And you can see the total number of each for the year at the very bottom. For sworn complaints, we had no sworn complaints in Quarter Three or Quarter Four. And that is the presentation. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions? Commissioner Barbo.
Thank you, Mr. Gutierrez. I, on your chart, the blue one, they, so you're saying that because there was a sworn complaint that you spoke to publicly, you're saying that one was reviewed, found irrelevant, and brought back to you all?
That's right.
And, and what was, and you handled it, you said, or what was the result?
Yeah, we just informed them that, you know, it was not relevant to the Code because they were citing certain violations of the Code of Conduct. It was reviewed by the Review Board Chair, found that it was not relevant to the Code, and we basically informed those individuals of that. They were satisfied with that.
Thank you. And I think, I believe that is the one that you provided public comment on before that review was done?
No, ma'am, because that was not submitted until the fourth quarter.
The fourth quarter?
Yes.
Yeah. That's not the one that you came up to us that?
No, those were, there was another two.
And they're not documented here?
Those were issued in the previous fiscal year, so they wouldn't be on this particular report.
They were just now, like in April, May, June, right before election, primary elections?
I'm not, I'm not sure which complaint you were referring to, because it was two sworn complaints that were not submitted to the Board, but those were in the previous fiscal year, if I recall correctly, I'm sorry.
Okay. I'll follow up on that.
Okay.
And for the housing, when you say the housing appeals, what housing, who's the, where are those appeals coming from? From our Housing Department? Is this evictions and assessors? What is this housing?
Yes, ma'am. So, when there is an alleged violation of the administrative plan or the Community Connection Housing Services Program, the Housing Department will issue a proposed termination of assistance to that particular individual receiving assistance. If that individual files an appeal within ten business days, then a hearing is scheduled, and I am the hearing officer in those particular matters and issue decisions within ten days of each hearing.
And who is, you're the hearing officer, so you make the decisions on those?
Yes.
Not the Board? Not the Code of Conduct?
No, ma'am. Me, myself. And that was, that was a joint agreement between the County Manager and the Housing Department for this office to be the hearing officer.
And do you know how many housing, because I'm a New Mexico legal aide, I believe we all do, about many of the vouchers and housing assistance being basic? do, about many of the vouchers and housing assistance being basic, the way I've heard it from them, again, is randomly denied or rejected. I, I shouldn't say randomly because I bet there's a reason with it, but that many times the reason why people are going to legal aid is because they don't understand why they're getting their housing rejected, their housing assistance rejected. And so I'm assuming these thirty-nine that you have, how many would you say of, that do you know how many are given in any, in these quarters? And how many you see? Like, is it a hundred and you see thirty-nine of them? But I'm just trying to get, like, a sense of how many people are actually filing an appeal.
Yes, ma'am. And to answer that, because there's two processes. The housing department will assess the initial application process. If it is denied, that is a housing, that is a housing discretion decision.
I'm talking about people already on housing and getting their...
So then that's the second part. So when, once they are approved, and there is a proposed termination of assistance, then that comes to our office. But I, I, I understood your question, ma'am, to be, you know, whether they were being denied.
I kept, you said they only have ten days to appeal. I was on housing, right, so I know, and I got, hopefully you're on top of it and do the ten business days, get in your appeal, get it to you, and hopefully you get a pill. But I imagine that there's a whole bunch of people that don't make that ten days, maybe don't even recognize that they've been denied until it's too late past those days. So I'm wondering what that number is compared to the thirty-nine that you see.
Yeah, that's, I, I wouldn't have that information. I only have the information of when an appeal is filed and when it comes to my office. In the initial notice of proposed termination, it does outline all that information for the particular participant, as far as the requirement to file appeals within ten days. So that is a requirement in their notice, and they have that. And hopefully, these folks are filing appeals.
And last, if I may, Madam Chair, that, just what, what, when you, in those thirty-nine cases and you're, what do you measure that up against in order to make your decision when you're reviewing those appeals?
The policies themselves for housing, the administrative plan and the Community Connections Program policies, it's all spelled out in there, which are authorized and very similar to HUD regulations.
So then I'd imagine that most of these pills are unfounded or that because they, I imagine our housing department's first vetting, trying to make sure that they're not, you know, that, and doing all the stops. And when it comes to you, it's sort of just a...
Well, not always, ma'am. I try to facilitate settlements as well. If I think the parties can come to an agreement and I say, I think that, you know, there's a particular middle ground where they could meet, I will do my best to facilitate that prior thing, than going to hearing. I will ask the parties a lot of times if it can be resolved, and it's usually up to the, the department whether they feel we need to move forward with the hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Gutierrez.
Yes, ma'am.
Any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Gutierrez.
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, we'll move on to Item Six, the County Manager's Search. I believe we do have Cindy Chavez who is on Zoom, and we'd like to bring her up. And we have Ken Martinez, our attorney, here, but I would just like to say a couple of, of words of, of appreciation really for our, our county attorney, our, our Human Resources Department, Julianne Baca, interim manager Shirley Reagan, for helping pull this together for today. As you all know, we started this process sort of at the end of February with Julie Morges Baca and her intent to retire, and we've been through the process of vetting and interviewing and selecting. There she is, Cindy Chavez, in our June meeting. And today, what we are going to talk about is that negotiated contract. It's up for approval by this body, but I wanted to thank and welcome Ms. Chavez, and we are so looking forward to you moving forward if this contract is approved. But I think we, we can defer to Ken, and then maybe you can say, well, actually, let me, let me, since you're from far away, let's have you say a few words to the, to the commission, and thank you for, for tuning in.
Well, thank you so much. I, I know you have a big meeting ahead of you. I'm just, first of all, I want to say how honored I would be to serve as your county executive, and I enjoyed meeting everybody there that I've had an opportunity to meet and have really enjoyed the process deeply, and I'm excited to hear about your deliberations and make sure that any questions I can answer, I'm able to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Chavez. Ken, maybe you can go through our, our contract.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Vice Chair, and members of the commission. If it may please the commission, thank you, Madam Chair. You thanked everybody, but of course, you didn't thank yourself, but you did a great job in negotiating this contract, and it was indeed a pleasure to work on that. And of course, Shirley has been excellent to work with. She helps us with everything because she has so many hats, so she also helped us be working with Para, since she's on that board. So thank you so much, Shirley, and Julianne is just completely excellent. I don't know what we'd do without her, and Bernadette was really above and beyond the call. So we were able to put everything together, able to share this contract with most of you a week ago. As we were working it through, I wanted to keep you all updated. It's a good contract, and it basically is from November thirteenth, start date of twenty twenty-four, for four years. It'll have a base salary of two hundred and thirty thousand dollars with an additional contribution to a retirement account, Para, that Shirley helped us with, of twenty thousand dollars. Has moving expenses in here. It has a, a new thing, I think it's a good best practice, which is an annual review. So basically, we would ask the incoming county managers to come up with kind of a plan and development of what we're going to accomplish maybe in ninety days in concert with the commission, and then create an annual review about how those things are moving forward. Puts a target on there of maybe three to nine percent, I believe, for additional, but completely up to the commission. But it creates this process of meeting and talking about where we're at and what we're doing. Other than that, everything is a lot like the current contract for our wonderful retired now Julie Morges Baca. So there's a lot of regular stuff in there, except for the new annual review and the moving expense. The comps, to let us know where we're at on this at two thirty, it's reasonable, I think, under the negotiations. Just recently, the executive wage analysis that we did for everybody here to look at potential increases at the executive level, there was a market study at twelve percent to ten percent. Of course, with a wonderful Julie Morges Baca's amount of two fifteen, that would have put it between two forty and two thirty-six, just on that market analysis. So puts it, again, in the ballpark, and then you verify it with other jurisdictions, even in the state. Doñana County, on August twenty-second, so they're doing the same thing we were doing at the same time, they hired a new county manager at two hundred and twenty thousand base salary. So it's a smaller county, but a, a good urban county. And then Los Alamos County, which is almost always the highest hired county manager, beginning March third of twenty twenty-four, at two hundred and sixty-one, one fifty-one base. So that's the biggest, highest pay in, in the state. If you look at other, like, counties and other governmental entities, it's a fair amount, and this is a great government. And so people are happy to work here, and this is a great commission. If there are any specific questions, I'm more than happy to answer them at this time.
Any questions for Mr. Commissioner Barbo.
I don't have any questions. I just want to thank you, thank you for the comparison, thank you for thoroughness, always keeping us informed along the way. And I do want to, once again, thank our Chair Baca, just, this has sprung upon us, and we didn't necessarily, I know I probably would have had the capacity to be so thorough, so I just thank you for your thoroughness and your attention to detail and working with our team to get this done. I'm excited to keep moving forward for our county, so thank you.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Olivas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to just reiterate what Commissioner Barbo just said. A huge thank you to you, Madam Chair, for leading us through this, this whole process from the announcement of retirement all the way now to, you know, on the precipice of, of inking a contract with our new county manager, Ms. Cindy Chavez, who I am very excited to work with and, and see on the ground here, working with our wonderful staff at Burnley County. To our county attorney, Mr. Martinez, thank you for just keeping us up to date every step of the way and really leading a very even-keeled, even-handed process, and, and I think it really showed. And lastly, to, to our HR Director, Bernadette, just, again, really built and supported an amazing process for us, made this really as easy as it could possibly be, and supported us every step of the way. So really excited to be here and really excited to have Ms. Chavez on board, so thank you all.
And I want to move approval of the contract before us. Do I have a second?
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded, and I, I just want one, one more final statement besides thanking Ken for his, his very good work in, in negotiating this contract with me. Shirley Reagan, thank you so much for your service as an interim county manager, and you're going to continue on until Ms. Chavez starts. The start date, as Mr. Martinez said, is mid-November, but that's just a wink of an eye away, and Shirley has been working very closely with, with Cindy. She's come in a few times, and she will before her start date, so we anticipate that to be a very smooth transition. And Julianne, again, thank you. So unless there's no further discussion or questions, I'll, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Any opposed? Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken, and thank you, Cindy. We're very much looking forward to you coming and working with us here in Burnley County. Great, we move on to Item Seven, Approval of the Minutes. I move approval of the August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four Administrative Meeting Minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
And that passes, thank you. Item Eight, Approval of the Consent Agenda. Madam Clerk, can you please provide a resolution number for Item Eight E?
Great big one, FR twenty twenty-four dash ninety-five.
Ninety-five, thank you. The consent agenda has been published and made available to the public, therefore I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
That passes, thank you, and adoption of resolutions.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner, Vice Chair Olivas.
I just wanted to take a, a point of privilege here to thank all the members that we just appointed to several of our boards and advisory committees, Attention Facility Advisory Board, our Evaluation Protest Board, our Use Force Commission, Commission. Really always appreciate these community members that step up, some of them being reappointed, some for the first time, and just appreciate them stepping up to serve. That's all. Thank you.
Vice Chair Olivas. Item Ten, Approvals, Behavioral Health Division, DCM Wayne Lindstrom to present. Dr. Lindstrom, welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the commission. You approved five candidates at your last commission meeting, and I have another four to present to you this evening for your consideration. There are a total of fourteen required in the ordinance that you passed on June the twenty-fifth, and my goal is to have that balance in place for a presentation to you at your next full commission meeting. The first candidate is our, the ordinance spells out representatives from different sectors of the community. The first on this candidate grouping is a hospital health system representative, and we are proposing Rodney McNeese, who many of you may know. He's the Senior Executive Director at University of New Mexico Hospital. Next is a public safety representative, and that candidate is Walter Adams, and he is the Deputy Director of the Albuquerque Community Safety, often referred to as ACS. And I might point out that there are two public safety representatives called for in the ordinance, so we should have that additional candidate to you at the next commission meeting. The third is the peer support worker representative, that's Joseph Thomas Shaw. He's a certified peer support worker himself and currently fills the position of Director of Operations at Fathers Building Futures. And lastly, but not least, is the City of Albuquerque representative, and that would be Dr. Charlie Verpleth, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, who's the Deputy Director for Social Services and Connections with the city.
Thank you, Dr. Lindstrom. I just want to thank you, I mean, I think these are, it's a stellar group. I'm, I'm really appreciative of your work in, in bringing these folks on. Any questions? Commissioner Barbo.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Dr. Lindstrom, so important, I, I, these are excellent selections. Thank you for your work and due diligence on this. I think Fathers Building Futures does so much work, both in community and at MDC. These are just great selections, and Charlie is actually, they were, you know, instrumental in improving our access to the tiny home village and making the changes we need there to where we're now actually seeing people and having that, that place full. So just want to thank you for this work, for getting this done so quickly, and looks good. I, I mean, it feels like we're really making those connections with all these positions, so thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
I make a motion to approve.
Thank you. I'll second that.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you. Dr. Lindstrom, you're up again. Item B.
Thank you. This time, I'm asking you to consider a motion to approve three hundred thousand dollars, which is basically the annual operating costs associated with the implementation of Unitis, which the commission has had presentations on previously. This will be the first implementation for us to be able to do meaningful care coordination, and not only in the realm of behavioral health, but in, in human services as well. And this is a collaboration with the City of Albuquerque that will likewise be contributing to the annual operating costs as well.
Any questions? I'm, I'm really excited about this as well. I think the communication is just so key to this, so I move approval.
Second.
Seconded, and Commissioner Barbo, comment?
Yeah, I do have questions. I think you, thankfully, you were already on board when Commissioner Olivas and I held those sort of community meetings around the ordinance that thankfully was passed by this full commission. If you were there and you heard that it is of both community and provider, it is, it was the data sharing, the data agreements are some of the most important things that came out in those meetings, right, that people are concerned, providers are concerned about. You addressed them, thankfully you were there because you had good answers to give them. But, you know, and, and you actually said it best at one of the community meetings that, you know, we've had a, oh, this has been going on since the eighties or probably before then, right, of the next data system, the next data system, but both community and providers had big concerns about the data. You say we've, I don't think we've actually, I'm constantly asking about this, and I've heard a little bit more at the commi, just Criminal Justice Coordinating Table, but I, I don't think we've actually gotten a, any, anything presented to us at this table about the Unitis, so I'd love that eventually. I still want to approve it because I think we need, what's important to me is that the state, the city, and the county are all in the same system. What, what I heard really, coming loud and clear, that providers are worried about having to do more data and multiple systems, so I want to try and ensure them, or hopefully you can help us ensure them, that there's going to be one system and that apples are going to speak to apples and that the, that this is going to actually improve, improve our data and how we make decisions based on our data, and that all of our parties will be not only forced to enter data, because often I hear, well, let's just write in our grants, they get money for us, they have to do it. Well, yes, and we, there should be motivation for doing this. So I'd just love to hear what you think about this. We haven't seen this, right, actually, and how, how this is going to help us here and how we ensure the providers in the community that it's not another thing.
Madam Commissioner, Commissioner Barbo, first of all, I'd like to say if the commission would like to have a demonstration of Unitis, we'd be glad to schedule that and make that, that happen. Secondly, and as you heard me say at the, the public meetings, a lot of technology that's been implemented in New Mexico in the past ultimately failed because, one, there was no system of accountability, so one of the things I want us to do is to add compliance with utilizing this tool in our contracts. Um, so, but there needs to be a carrot and a stick. And so, the reality is, is that, um, there are no incentives in place for providers currently. And so, we're working and when I have the new behavioral health advisory board and the, and the technology advisory council in place, I'm going to present them, uh, with a package of incentives that we potentially can offer. So, if there's a need for additional, uh, capacity building, infrastructure development, et cetera, on the part of providers, uh, that there's a way for us to, uh, basically, uh, not make implementation unfunded mandate, uh, to the provider community. In addition to that, we're in the process now of scheduling a demo internally with Synchronis, which is New Mexico's health information exchange. Um, and the health information exchange does integrate techni- technologically with Unitus so that that can also give us additional and more robust information beyond what is in Unitus as well for care coordination purposes. We know that historically, when any provider organization makes a referral, um, the majority of those referrals will never connect, just right out of the gate. Regardless if you're talking about behavioral health, you're talking about primary care, you're talking about hospitals, um, et cetera. This potentially gives us a tool, uh, to know when a connection happens, uh, to have immediate access rather than, because the longer the lapse of time between when the referral's made and there's a connection available is another key variable. This will give us the opportunity to contract, uh, that referral process. And we will be able to, um, have the data available, the data analytics and the public, uh, facing dashboard reporting on how well this is working as we pursue this, um, implementation.
I have a comment on that, uh, if I may. I, I really am appreciative of your statement about n- uh, not requiring an unfunded mandate. I mean, I think you get what you pay for and so, it's got to be good data in to get good data out, that kind of thing. And so, our providers really need to be at the table talking with you about, you know, what they need. They might need to hire a per- uh, an additional person on their staff to do this function, uh, of, of their provision of service. So, thank you for that, Dr. Lindstrom. Really appreciate it. Vice Chair, uh, Olivas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just building on that and, and doubling down on what both you and Commissioner Barbo said and yourself, Dr. Lindstrom is, yeah, we've just got to make sure that, that we're receptive to those needs of providers. We heard it loud and clear in all those community meetings and stakeholder meetings that, you know, I think providers are a little bit skeptical of this stuff because A, they've seen them, they come and go before, but B, I think a more powerful reason is that, uh, they just haven't had the support, whether that's technical support or financial support. You know, if they have to actually buy hardware, you know, capital investments, things that they need to buy, um, and then the staff that they need to support that and the training that they need for that staff. Um, and it sounds like you're already, you're already there as far as thinking that through and making sure that we're receptive to, to their needs and ready to, to meet them where they're at. But at the same time, have that, that stick on, on the tail end to say if providers are not engaging in that and thinking about that, talking to that, talking about that with us, um, there also has to be, uh, consequences for, for not being accountable. So, I really appreciate this and, uh, kudos to you and, uh, Director Ramirez over at, at the city for, for his work on this and all of you coming together and working together to get us on the same page.
He's a goo- he's a good partner.
That's great to hear.
Yes.
That's great to hear. And that's been moved and seconded, um, without further discussion. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you. And, uh, last item there, Dr. Lindstrom, behavioral health, um, observation and assessment
Madam Chair, members of the commission, um, I believe you are, um, acutely aware of the role that the, um, observation assessment unit has played at the CARES campus in, uh, making the services there more accessible. And, um, it was built, I believe, into the FY25 budget to expand that. And the, um, clinical services there are under contract, um, in this case, an inter-agency agreement with the University of New Mexico Hospital. And so, uh, we're asking you to approve $463,216 in re- reoccurring funds to support that additional capacity, um, at the observation assessment unit at the CARES campus. I have Jessica Aramio, uh, available should you have, uh, specific questions about, uh, the role of the, that additional capacity.
Any questions for Dr. Lindstrom or Jessica? Commissioner Barbo.
Well, I just, um, so, like, we opened the observation, I think, probably less than a year ago and now the expansion, thi- this is intergovernmental agreement because University of New Mexico Health Sciences Center will be running the observation.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's why it's an inter-government agreement. And this will expand our observation unit to cover more at how many?
Let me, Jessica, if you would come up, please.
Good evening. So, the, the increase will actually allow us to hire more nurses. UNM will be allowed to hire more nurses. So, that's what's been kind of keeping us, not being able to expand is because we have more programs and less nurse staff. And so, be able to expand with that amount, we'll be able to have a couple of more, um, nurses that are specifically for observation and assessment. Uh, what we have seen is we're kind of in a little bit of a crisis. We have, um, as I mentioned, um, in my email to you, Commissioner Olivas, is that we are hearing from our clients that the fentanyl pills, it's a shortage. And so, a lot of more people are needing detox. And so, we are averaging about 10 to 15 individuals waiting in our observation and assessment for detox because we are at capacity. And so, what, what this money will help us is be able to provide that nurse to be able to at least start them on some medications, whether it be medicated assisted treatment or some other withdrawal management medication so that if they aren't able to get a bed, then we could at least start them on medications while they continue to wait for a bed or if they're not wanting to, then also refer them to our outpatient clinic. This will also be able to expand, um, the amount of beds. So, right now, of course, it's at 20. We will be able to expand that more now that we'll have a nurse designated for observation and assessment.
Right now, is there, because it feels like the vacancy, I know staffing has been a problem also to be able to fill that need. Are we at that and we anticipate being able to hire nurses for this position?
Yes. So, the, um, County Commissioner, the staffing for Burnley County has increased drastically and we're actually very thankful for the market study that we've done and a couple of raises that we have. We've been able to keep that retention, um, to keep our staff. And one of the barriers that we had was because we didn't have, um, enough nursing, we were unable to continue to take that expansion. So, now with both, we will be able to expand more.
Thank you very much.
So, one last question of clarification. So, this 463,000, that's for operations and staffing. It's for?
For UNM to, um, Vice Chair, or I'm sorry, Chair, to hire more nurses, UNM.
So, it's just for staffing?
Yes.
Okay. I see. Okay. Vice Chair Olivas?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you Director and, and DCM for your responses on, on my email that was sort of related, but not related, um, and really explaining what's going on there and, and you did that again here. Um, so, I really support this. I mean, anything we can do to, to expand treatment and just expand the number of, of beds and resources available, I'm, I'm a hundred percent for. Uh, that's what this money is, that's what this money is for. That's what the taxpayers expected to go to. Um, my question is just kind of, sort of off topic, but same thing is this is for staffing. Um, at some point, do we run into a facilities, uh, need here? I, I'm just kind of wondering as we're starting to think about our capital outlay requests and sort of going into the next legislative session, that kind of thing. Um, you know, we don't typically ask for sort of this kind of thing, the operational needs, which I, I totally understand, but, uh, just kind of wondering if there are additional capital needs that you all are thinking about or are we pretty good on the facility and we just need more people to, to work there, which is always a problem.
Good question, Vice Chair. Um, yes, so originally when the new renovation happened before, when it was in the old area where observation assessment, we were able to have 48 detox beds. Because of the new renovation, that has limited us to only 30. Um, it, it was just not big enough. And so, we've, we've kind of really kind of looked at both ways. You know, is it better off to move it back? But then that also means that we will have to expand, um, to give them a day room to be able to have their meeting, their groups. And so, I've actually spoken to Dr. Lindstrom many times as our wish list is to possibly be able to expand or, you know, in the near future, maybe possibly building another, a detox facility, um, because we, we have noticed that this is a huge need, especially now.
Thank you. Just, yeah, I hope we can continue those conversations as we, as we go forward.
Um, Madam Chair and Commissioner Olivas, uh, the other thing we want to do is plan for a behavioral health system in a holistic way and not just look at the individual components and their needs and only what we provide versus what the city provides, but be able to plan for a continuity of care comprehensively. Um, so, as you know, we just opened the Crisis Triage Center at UNM, which provides 16 crisis stabilization beds, its own observation and assessment unit, et cetera. So, before I could in good conscience come to you about what our expansion needs are, I want to be able to understand what the utilization is, uh, in, in UNM's re- new resource, but also other resources in the community and not just for adults, but also for youth. So, just to be frank with you, I'm not there yet. Um, there are other kinds of capital requests that you'll hear me making, um, when we get past the strategic planning process that may or may not include an expansion at the CARES campus based on the variables that I was just talking about.
I really appreciate that, that thoughtful approach and making sure that we're looking at the, the systems level also. Um, and, and, uh, I know that you're both doing that, um, and, and working together and collaboratively on that. So, I look forward to, to seeing those discussions occur and, uh, seeing the strategic plan and, and how those all kind of fold in together. So, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say ditto that. I, I'm really excited that you're thinking about that strategically and that that will be a component of your strategic plan, is what you're saying about, uh, shared facilities, system-wide and future growth. So, thank you.
Me too. I just want to say I feel emotional hearing you say it just because I get, oh, the expertise we've needed to see. We have the, we have Gateway Center that's also supposed to be a 23-hour detox, the Crisis Stabilization Center and then our services. So, of course, there's always going to be room to fill the need. We know even if fentanyl's on the down, there's going to be xylazine's on the up and the next drug is going to be on its way. Um, but I think of our, um, our services to fulfill pregnant worker, uh, you know, pregnant women with substance use and their, and, and children and our now y- new youth wing or young adult youth wing and just being able to see that big picture and how it connects to our, um, our UNM, our city and our, and our other services, our MDC services, all of those connected. So, I think so much has happened that just needs to settle a little bit to be able to see it. So, I'm just really thankful for your expertise and it fills my heart to even hear you say, let's look at the big picture and, and look at the systems together. So, thank you so much for that.
Thank you. I move approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jessica. Um, announcement of our next commission meeting will be Tuesday, September 10th. There'll be a zoning meeting at 3:00 PM at the, at, at these Kansas Angeles Commission chambers and also September 10th, the administrative meeting at 5:00 PM in these same chambers. If there's no other business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.